Years ago, I had two students in a class that one sat right next to each other. Shannon and Mallory. I couldn't tell them first names. Seven letters, double consonants.
I have a renter named Mallory. I'm about to get her.
No, this is years ago. Years ago. That's how I memorize names, it's patterns.
You ready to go? You got me on line here and I'm talking to Eileen and the whole world is learning these secrets. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville to order on Tuesday, February 14th at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Mike DeLecky.
I'm here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
John Miller.
Here.
Steve Becker has been excused. Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Barbara Das.
Here.
And Ken Killian.
Here.
First up on the agenda tonight is the ceremonial swearing-in of police officers. We have two new officers, Jacob Brown and Samuel Vandervert. And Jan, if you would come forward and swear them in and if they would come forward and let the community take a look at them. Chief McKinley, if you would direct them.
Sure.
May I say your name?
Hi, Jacob Brown.
Having been appointed to be officer police officer. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Terrific. There you go.
Mr. President, isn't it customary that they say a little about themselves?
Oh, I don't know, they're leaving. That's okay. That's okay. We've probably gotten them enough.
They can't wait to get to work.
They're probably scared enough as it is tonight, so. Next on the agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the 124 and 126 council meetings. Item B is payment of bills. C, January financial report. D, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none tonight. If there are any citizens out there that are interested in serving, please come down to City Hall and grab an application and see which committees and boards and commissions they might be interested in. Item E is licenses. We have a transfer of Class A beer and liquor license for windown on Main. A temporary Class B retailer's license for St. Augustine's University Parish for their elegant dinner on February 11th. One and/or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic and ferment malt beverages and intoxicating liquors and for taxi driver. And F is a permit for the United Way of Platteville to hang their banner from September 8th to September 30th, 2012. Is there any item on which you'd prefer separate discussion and action?
Move adoption of the consent calendar is presented. Second.
The motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five tonight is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And we have no one who's asked to speak tonight. Item six is reports, committee reports. Roundtree Gallery Board.
Nothing.
Plan Commission, that's in the packet. Freud and Reich Animal Trust Care.
Southern Anne.
Museum Board.
Monthly meeting is tomorrow night and the winter programs, the three lyceums will be starting, I think it's at early March, Eric. Sure.
Under other reports, we have the January Airport Financial Report.
The first winter lyceum is Sunday, March 4th. The Old Stonebreaker, James Gates Percival and the Lead Mines of Wisconsin, presented by Mark Leganfield. And also by Tamara Thompson, the History, Science, and Diving of the Piquette Mine. And then it continues March 11th with Odd Wisconsin, Amusing, Perplexing, and Unlikely Stories from Wisconsin's Past by Erica Janik. And then the last one for the winter season, Sunday, March 25th, American Women of the Civil War. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Under other reports, we have the January Airport Financial Report, the January Water and Sewer Expenditures and Revenues Report, the January City Attorney Statement, and various departments' progress reports. Are there any items there on which you have questions or would like to make some comments? It might be done in record time tonight. We've begun to action items. Item A is Resolution 12-05, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 1,745,000 general obligation refunding bonds. And I'm going to read the second one here so that Jeff can maybe comment on both of them and we'll vote on them separately. The second item is Resolution 12-06, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $6.8 million water and sewer system revenue bonds of the city of Platteville and providing for payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. Jeff Belangia is here from Hutchinson Shockey and Early Company. If you would like to give us a little explanation of that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. As you know, we've been working on these two financings for some time now. And during that process, I think you all recognize that we secure a credit rating analysis from Standard and Poor's out of New York. I, first of all, want to thank your administration, the staff, the city manager, particularly the city manager and Duane for assisting and Kathy Martin for assisting on the phone calls. They were very thorough and it was actually quite enjoyable. As you know, we've moved our rating up over the past few years to AA minus. It's an incredible rating. And certainly, the administration and the council is to be commended for that. Those credit ratings are not easy to come by and particularly in an economy that's not as stellar as it probably should be. So with that, I certainly, it makes my job quite easy, a lot easier, when we have people of that professional nature and I certainly want to commend them. I don't mean to leave Howard out by any means because Howard's always been a great source of information for us and whenever asked, he's certainly there to help and sit in on those rating reports or rating calls also. Two things, I just want to change a little bit and you'll see why. The par amounts have been reduced from our original sizing of the issue. I did pass out this three-page handout. John was asking me, geez, is this for tonight? Because I wasn't in my packet and, John, I apologize, but we did not know the final rates till today anyway. So this is very typical of what you would see on the sale date. These rates were being offered for the council's consideration and certainly, if you adopt the resolutions, you will lock into them this evening. On the front page, I tried to condense it into really the meat and potatoes of what has happened in the funding. Yields have gotten so low that buyers are asking to pay premiums on the bonds they buy because they recognize that we're close to the bottom of the interest rate. Unless they start giving the money away, rates are going to go up eventually. So what buyers are anticipating is an increase in rates sometime while they hold those bonds and they want higher coupons, which means they're willing to pay us premiums. If you take a look at, you know, the $6,750,000, that was originally $6,800,000. We're going to be delivering to you for that $6,750,000, $6,993,936.75. The true interest cost, and this was a 20-year revenue bond financing. I've been doing this 31 years. I start 32 years in May, if God allows it. And I have never had a 20-year revenue bond issue with a tick this low. In fact, I'm not sure I've had one with a tick at $4.29, let alone a $3.29. So our timing for this issue has been superb. This issue is, part of it is new money for your capital projects for 2012 and about half of it is a refinancing of a note we put in place, a short-term note, which was our plan to combine these two in a larger issue. Thank goodness we did that because rates would have not have been, if we'd gone into long-term initially on 3.7, we wouldn't see these. We'd be locked in and into a debt service structure that I didn't want the city to have to entertain, so. On the general obligation refunding bonds, another great news here because almost 100% of this particular issue is for a TID and it's a refinance of, again, a number of years ago in 2007, we borrowed some monies. Some of it were for capital projects, which we've now paid out with this year's payment in '12, and some of it was for TID work. And of course, as you all know, with the TID, we're not levying a tax on the general property to pay it. We're using TID increments. So we're at a 2.15 and this is going to amortize itself for the next 13 years, so.
It's 2.15%.
That's your true interest cost. Mike, that's all costs included.
About the best you could get us?
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
No, actually Larry said, asked me the same question, but Larry's always serious about, you know, well, that's pretty good, Jeff, but don't you think you could have done a little better?
As long as I have you here, let me ask one other question. As I'm reading this, especially with the revenue bonds, we'd have to pay back $6.75 million.
That's correct.
But they've given us $6.99 million?
Yes, that's correct. Well, we're using that money though, too, though, Mike. I mean, it's not like it's.
I know, I know.
But, yeah, part of that money will go into reserve fund, which hopefully, as time goes on, you'll earn some interest on, but it represents the last payment of debt on this. So we had to fund the reserve and also fund the capital projects. But yes, you're correct.
Normally, when we borrow money, we get what we get, but they're giving us more than we ask for.
Yeah, usually we get a little less because we're paying, and this includes paying out all the other vendors. So normally, you're right, when you issue a par amount, if you sell par bonds face value, you know, you might issue $1,725,000 and you only get $1,700,000 because you've paid part of it out to the expenses. This includes all expenses. That's a true interest cost after all expensive and paid.
So they're liking our AA minus rating?
You know, that's another great question, Mike, because there's such a difference between the next level down, an A1, which is not a bad credit rating, to a AA. Once you jump into that AA category, it knocks about 40 basis points off of each maturity in terms of interest rate. So that's been significant in terms of the efforts you guys have put forth in securing that rating. And I must say Larry and Duane were very good about, you know, making the rating agencies comfortable with the fact that you have reserves, you have a written policy for debt, and you have a written policy for your investments, so. They are to be commended for that. It's saved the city thousands and thousands of dollars over the life of these issues. I included detail in the next two pages, if you'd like to take a look. The one I'm particularly proud of is the water and sewer rev bonds. Now, this is probably a little more detailed and start to get really too analytical in terms of how we fared. If you look in the center part where you see the May 1 dating and you see MMD, does everyone see that? And then there's some numbers, points, two-point, et cetera. The MMD is the municipal market data and it represents the highest grade security on that day for that maturity. It's a consensus by all buyers at the end of the day that a true AAA would yield about a .21 for that May 1 13 maturity. Does everyone see that? And as you go down, you can see that as you get out further, what they felt in those particular days were true triple As. Then you look next to it, you see our coupons, our spread, our yields, and you can see the spread. That's the difference between our AA1 on that particular, for our sale, and what a true AAA would yield, okay? So it gives me an idea as to where those buyers are. Now, there are very few triple As in the country. There are three or four in the state of Wisconsin. And I know Larry keeps asking why we're not a AAA, but I told him the council would probably balk at having 100% cash in their undesignated fund balance to pay off all our debt and that's basically what it represents, so. You reach a point of diminishing returns and I think if you take a look at this, it tells us that that's in fact the case. Turn the page, I want to show you the, Watosha, it's a bank, or, sorry, both of these are bank-qualified, just like ours, in Della Field, Wisconsin. I think you all pretty have a good idea where Della Field is over Waukesha County. But you take a look at particularly our revenue bond issue, our pricing against the AA2. Now, this is a revenue bond against a AA2, one grade higher. We're a AA minus, which would be a Moody's AA3. They're a Moody's AA2, which would be a S&amp;P straight AA, okay? So they're a higher grade paper and they're a general obligation, meaning they're levying a full faith and credit. If you look at, on the bottom, our AA versus their AA2, we're actually through them by those bases, by 12 basis points, 14 basis points. Does everyone see that?
At the bottom, where?
At the bottom of page three, where it says AA versus AA2. Eileen, just right in front of your finger there, I see. Okay, there you go.
The negative number suggests that we're doing better?
See, the negative number suggests that we've actually done better. It means we're through their scale in those maturities by those basis points. Not a lot, but you would never expect that. It's a revenue bond, it's not the full faith and credit of the city. Now, I will take a kick in the pants from Larry when you go over and look at the general obligation because I cannot explain the AA versus AA2 in 2018. In '20 and '22, we're 400ths of a percent, they're 400ths of a percent better and they're 900ths of a percent in '22. I'll take that because they're a higher credit. I can't explain the 24 basis points in that maturity and neither can my salespeople because it was, there must have been somebody that actually wanted that maturity so badly that they stepped up or they're eating that maturity and losing something on it because they made the wrong guess, so that's the only thing I can tell you. Otherwise, this was nearly a perfect comparable. Any questions?
Isn't AA minus the same thing as the US government?
Mike, you're right. We, US government used to be, exactly, it used to be AAA. Now they're down, they're actually down to a AA1. They're really two little steps above us, but they can print money and we can't?
Yeah, there's that problem. Tried to go to the Chinese, too, they're not buying.
I thank you, really, and you can tell I'm a little, kind of happy for you guys and it's always a real pleasure, but this was a great sale. Really pleased for you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, I would just like to compliment Jeff because he's worked with us now for, I don't know, five years maybe?
I think it's six, yeah, six.
And a lot of this improvement has been through your hard work as well, so, I mean, I personally want to compliment you because we've definitely done well.
Makes me feel really good, thanks. Eileen, that's a great part of this job really is to help people and, you know, we all got to work doing something, but it really is still fun for me after 31 years and I appreciate that comment.
Anything else for Jeff? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, back on here, we have item A, which is Resolution 12-05 for the general obligation refunding bonds.
I move reapprove Resolution Number 12-05.
Second.
Eileen got there just momentarily. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B is Resolution 12-06, the resolution authorizing $6.8 million of revenue bonds for the city of Platteville.
Move to approve a Resolution 12-06?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Jeff, thank you. Okay. Item C under action tonight is Resolution 12-07, the street and utility superintendent compensation changes as suggested by the city manager. Larry, you want to give us a little brief explanation of that, please?
Certainly. In the late fall of last year, we had a new handbook that was proposed to the city council. In that handbook, there were many positions that lost the ability to use comp time as we transitioned from offering comp time to salaried employees to not offering comp time. As part of that discussion, I had requested initially that the superintendents be exempt from our policy of not offering comp time. The city council decided not to take that recommendation and instead, we discussed the idea of, you asked the city manager to meet with these superintendents to develop an alternative way of recognizing them. What I've done is I've met with them, they've made a request or we discussed options and what I'm bringing forward to you today is an option that I was comfortable making the recommendation for.
Thank you. Questions?
Could you elaborate on what that option is, including what it goes from and what it goes to?
Certainly. Let me scroll down a little bit. The position of utility superintendent is a position that I'm requesting, we add three vacation days to their compensation package. The position of street superintendent is a position that I'm requesting, hang on a sec, that we increase the salary by $3,504. And this is to help compensate the employees for their time lost as a result of not being able to bank their comp time. There are some positions within the city that we rely on, on situations where, for example, a water main breaks, the utility superintendent is on call in that case. Or when a snow emergency occurs, the public works department is on call that time. And as salaried positions, they are not compensated for their overtime.
And are these for one year or are these ongoing?
My recommendation is to change the salary of the position as well as to change the vacation time allotted to the position. So it would not occur just in 2012, but it would be from this point going forward.
And how many vacation days does that result in with the adding three?
This question was raised at our last meeting and I think I had looked that up. If I recall, I think they have three weeks.
Three.
Three, how many years have you been here? Seven?
Yes.
They have 120 hours right now and adding three days to that.
Are there questions? Okay, thank you, Larry.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2012-7, modifying the compensation and benefits for staff superintendents.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B under action is the downtown design standards document. The council approved the downtown revitalization plan in January 2011. The attached standards will give us some clear guidance as to what developers and others downtown can and can't do so that they have some upfront guidelines. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add to that as far as what we have there?
Well, I kind of summarized, there isn't a lot of changes, I think, that are recommended, but just so it's clear, when we adopted this document, there were standards that were included in that. I don't know if you had a chance to review that, but the recommended procedure was to have the Historic Preservation Commission review them, the Plan Commission review them, and then make recommendations to the council to basically tailor those standards to what we'd like to have in Platteville. The Historic Preservation Commission did make some recommended changes. They are highlighted in your document. The Plan Commission actually did not make any additional changes to that. They passed along what the Historic Preservation Commission had suggested. Most of those changes, I would categorize as either correcting typos or correcting recommendations to match existing policy or procedures as far as how the commission acts now. The one change that I would say does not fall under either one of those categories is a suggestion as far as who does a review of any guidelines or a development that doesn't meet the guidelines. The standards that were given to us by the consultant recommended that go to the Plan Commission for their review and approval. The commission suggested that we do kind of a combined commission that would be comprised of members of the Plan Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and a council member. Basically, it would be a new group that would review those changes. Other than that, I think the changes are, as I mentioned, basically typos and correcting policy and procedure. So at this point, the both commissions have recommended approval of the document. The last thing I would mention, that I'm kind of viewing this tonight as basically a preliminary approval of these guidelines because they're not in ordinance format. And as I put them into ordinance format, I also want to double-check because there are some recommendations in here that do not comply with current zoning requirements and standards, so I want to make sure that we review both of those together. For instance, one recommendation is here is basically that the buildings are up to the street front and that conflicts in some areas with the vision clearance requirements in the zoning ordinance. So I want to kind of make sure that we don't have this on the books and create a conflict with another ordinance, so I'm going to bring both of those changes forward at the same time so it will be a formal public hearing where we have this in ordinance format along with any zoning changes that are required because of this. But this will at least give us clear direction that that's the, this is what we want to have in the books and then I'll put it in that format.
Thank you. Questions for Joe or in general?
The Design Review Commission, is their decision a recommendation to the council or is their decision a final decision?
Their decision would be final, but I don't remember if there's an appeal process.
That was my question too, Joe, because it's on appendage A, maintenance and repair approval policy?
Yeah, it says applicants that wish to appeal the decision of the Design Review Commission may do so to the city council.
Okay.
So they would review it and if everybody's okay with it, then it's done at that point. But if the applicant doesn't agree with that commission's recommendations, they can appeal that decision to the council.
What if the council doesn't agree with the Design Review Commission?
Then they can override it.
That's what I've asked.
Yeah, that would be the appeal process.
It should be a committee then.
Creating a new commission flies contradictory to previous actions of eliminating or reducing the number of committees and commissions.
Is that what we're doing? Are we, we are creating a new commission then?
And it's worded as a commission. I think the way it's being described is probably better as a committee. Commissions have authority on their own in some way, shape, or form.
Well, it appears that this would be made up of two members of a Plan Commission and two members of the Historic Preservation Commission, so it appears that it would have commission.
What powers would you be giving this committee or this commission?
I think it's pretty well outlined in this document.
Well, they have powers to approve, subject to review by the council if someone appeals.
If someone appeals, but otherwise not.
Mm-hmm. But if they're all okay with it, there's no reason to bring it forward to us for any kind of appeal.
Okay, so the example we can use is our business meeting on Second Street and the buyer owner said that they had to get two new windows and it had to go through and he paid $6,000 a window and he wanted, if he wanted to appeal it, he could have came to the council to get that decision appealed. Is that what this ordinance is saying? Is that what we're doing? Is this what's?
That would be the process now, actually.
Okay. I don't think they understood that or knew that, the individual or the owner.
Yeah.
He thought it was the only way and this was what I had to do.
But now, it wouldn't come to the council, it would go to the Design Review Commission.
Right, and then if they want to appeal that decision, they can come to the council.
Right. But if everybody's happy with it, they say, yep, this makes the design standards go, then there's no reason to bring it before us.
I just want to make sure people have a final say that a non-biased party can look at it.
They have some recourse if they're not happy with the.
Drag inclusion.
Yeah, I guess just for clarification, I view this guideline as primarily for new construction, you know, new buildings or significant, you know, remodeling to existing buildings. I think that, you know, changing one window in an existing building, I don't, I see that as basically the current policies that we've got and the fact that this really wouldn't have much of an impact on that type of a project.
How would you determine then what project would go before the Design Review Commission? Would it only be new, new builds?
Well, it'd be projects that do not meet these guidelines, and part of these guidelines on page, what's, page three, the, the historic preservation commission has a maintenance, repair, and approval policy that's already in the books, that basically allows them to do repairs and other project changes, or changes to the building, as long as it's basically replacing what's already there, it's not changing the appearance, staff can approve that. These guidelines are kind of carrying that process forward for a, a new building. If somebody comes with a new building, it meets these design guidelines. Basically, they're good to go, they get a building permit, and they can proceed. If they want to do a project characteristic, or something that doesn't meet these standards, they want to, essentially a waiver of it, then they go in front of the commission, and then they kind of negotiate an approval or a change to the design. If through that process, they can't come to an agreement, the commission says, no, you got to follow the guidelines, then they can appeal that to the council.
And this is the design review commission?
Correct.
The new commission.
The questions, or comments, or?
Nope.
You care to make a motion?
I move that we approved the design guideline.
Second.
The motion is second, is there anything further? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, excuse me, item E tonight is to introduce a resolution to discontinue a portion of Bonson Street, and this is to set the public hearing for March 27, 2012. City adopted a revitalization plan for downtown in January 2011, and there's a potential developer who might potentially want to have some discontinuance of a portion of Bonson Street, and so this would set the public hearing for March 27 to consider that.
Just for clarification, when we say discontinue, what does that mean?
That would take a, a portion of the street right away that's now public, and turn it over to, well, normally it would turn it over to the private property owner that is adjoining it. In this case, it would go back to the, the city-owned parking lot, but then at that point, if that property is sold to a private developer, that what used to be public right away would now be private property.
So we're not talking about closing?
No, and this particular request would be basically to narrow the right-of-way, so that the traffic would still be going through, it would just be, the actual right-of-way would be narrower than it is now.
So they'd encroach into the normal setback, essentially, is what we're talking about here.
Is it, is it customary, prior to a public hearing, or during a public hearing, for emergency personnel to comment on this kind of request, or this kind of?
Yeah, th, this basically starts the process, we have to do a notification of surrounding property owners, there's a public hearing requirement, goes back to the planning commission for their recommendation, and obviously, the, the staff departments would be involved in the review as well.
So that it's a go to the plan commission?
This will go back to the plan commission, and then come to the council.
First, and then come to you. So basically, you're asking to set a public hearing for March 27?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second to the motion.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item F tonight, under action, and, excuse me, under action is a job description for property maintenance inspector slash clerical assistant. This is a job description as listed for somebody potentially who's hired.
This, the job description has no definition of the potential number of hours, or the potential extension or length of this job?
The city council has appropriated $20,000 to fund this position in 2012. At this time, staff cannot be sure as to what the hours that'll be encompassed within that. If we hire someone who is only available from the end of their semester to the beginning of their next semester, that would limit the number of hours they could put in, therefore, probably would not incur all $20,000. If we are able to find someone who can work earlier, or stay later in the year, and work less hours per week, we could essentially use up the $20,000. At this point, we're not, we're not comfortable explaining exactly what's going to be done, because we don't know who we would hire, and we'd like to maintain that flexibility.
And you're going to advertise here soon for the?
We will advertise it once the job description is approved. It is not noted what the position would make, but this would be expected to be probably around $10 an hour, or a little less.
And it's a one-time position?
Yep, the city council has budgeted $20,000, and the funding that's being used is from an old grant that we got many years ago, from the CDBG program, that no longer has reporting requirements tied to it. The fund is about $40,000 or $50,000, and we are appropriating $20,000 in 2012 to do this. The idea being that inspecting the city of Platteville does have an influence on low-income areas of our community, and therefore, we can justify using the money to help improve the appearance of low-income areas.
So at this point, then, we're anticipating this is a, a position for the, just the one year?
Yes.
Or pardon me, I didn't.
Just one year.
Or 2012.
Yes. If the city council decides they want to continue the program, or the, the position next year, they will have the funding available in the CDBG budget to do that. But beyond that, you're going to have to start using tax levy to support it, and that'll be a decision you'll have to make at budget time.
Make a motion, we approve the property maintenance inspector clerical assistant LTE for 2012.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion?
I have one question. What do you foresee, the amount of usage under section 1.14, says provides clerical and research assistance to the city manager?
Very minimal.
Minimal?
I don't have any programs in mind at this point, but occasionally, issues come up. For example, I'm debating whether or not to have this position or an intern review house numbers in town. Emergency services require that house numbers be in, be provided on each building in the town, in the city, and I suspect there are several buildings that do not have house numbers clearly defined. Whether or not that's a clerical responsibility of this position, or one of a similar position, I would have the flexibility of assigning that here.
What am I, what I'm thinking about also is whether assistance could be provided to the director of community planning and development.
Oh, this position will work under that department.
Yes, it's underneath that department.
They will have full.
Whether Joe Carroll could get some assistance as well.
Yes. I don't, I, I didn't mention that in the job description, but I thought perhaps it was understood.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G tonight is ordinance 12 dash 07, creating section 3.41, specifically the housing authority. We have a housing authority, but it's not actually listed in the ordinances as existing, and so this actually gives it birth and life, I guess. Is that right?
Well, it, it formalizes the.
Formalizes it?
The existing organization. When you're, when you're dealing with an authority, they have significant legal powers, and it's important to have them recognized in your official codebook.
I would move to approve ordinance 12 dash 07, creating section 3.1, 3.41, housing authority.
Second.
Motion is second, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item H tonight is ordinance 12 dash 08, amending section 3.33, paren one, paren three, legal custodians. This is draft of an ordinance updating the legal custodians of records in the municipal code, and this is primarily housekeeping, since we've changed the names of some of the custodians. For instance, the director of Parks and Recreation is now a recreation coordinator.
That's correct, it does, it's an up, updating our, our ordinances.
I would approve. Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item I tonight is to reconsider ordinance 12 dash 05, which created section 31.15, vending on city property, and is to reconsider this at the February 28, 2012 council meeting. Alderman, Killian, they asked that we bring this back, and so I will defer to him right now, to explain his.
Yes, after I voted on this, within a day, I, I thought about it quite a bit, and I decided that I should have followed my first thinking on this, which was to table it until sometime in May. So I'm asking now that this be reconsidered, and that be brought up in two weeks. And I think, in looking at this, when you look at whether there's really a need for it, how many people will be affected by it as far as vendors, also, we have a number of ordinances that already cover some of the things that are listed in this proposed ordinance, and so I'm asking for reconsideration of this particular ordinance would be passed.
Questions or comments?
I've had comments on this ordinance too, and I concur that it's probably something we re, need to reconsider. I would ask, it, I've brought this up before, I believe that we were ill-prepared with information about this ordinance. I've made calls to other communities that were referenced, and have not gotten very complete information for them, and have been led down trails that, to call other people who refer me to other people, who refer me to other people, and so I, I too support relooking at this.
My question is, is this not, is this, is this already an ordinance on the books?
It is.
Yes.
It is.
So what do you want to do on reconsidering it, you're saying?
Reconsider would be.
To eliminate the ordinance, is what you're asking us to do?
We could say repeal it and reconsider it.
So you want to amend the ordinance?
We could amend it.
That's, I would prefer to say, I'd like to amend the ordinance, and put it on, and tell me what amendments you want to make to the ordinance, because it's already there.
That's a possibility, too.
Well, that's the only way you're going to get my vote.
Other comments or discussion?
Nope, I voted no the last time, so I would agree to reconsider it.
We need to have somebody make a motion in a second to do that.
All right, I will move to reconsider at the February 28 meeting, ordinance 12 dash 05, creating section 31.15, vending on city property.
Second to the motion.
Motion is second.
I had a question. What are we reconsidering, and what are we going to do on the 28th? Eliminate the ordinance, or are you going to, because what are you asking with this vote? I guess I'm confused. Reconsider what? It's already an ordinance. So are you going to reconsider eliminating the ordinance?
We, it could be proposed to repeal the ordinance, and then to.
Why don't you say that now as the motion?
Recreate an ordinance at a later date.
Or amend the ordinance.
Or to amend it.
We can't repeal it directly right now, because it needs first to.
Right, I get that.
Just so people know, any council votes this, but anybody else, that, that only someone in the majority of any motion can ask to bring something back. If you're in the minority, you are, you're not allowed to do that. So Ken was voted in favor of it, and that did pass, and so he's asking for it to be reconsidered, but the only thing the vote does tonight is brings it back at a future meeting, at which point, then, specific action could be taken. You had a motion, the, I guess that works okay with the motion being made by Patrice. Oh, it doesn't seem to be bothering anybody. Is there anything else?
Did Patrice?
Yes, she did.
The last time?
Did she second it? It's your motion.
My motion? She made the motion.
But you were in the minority, and I guess the, the question is, maybe Ken should make the motion, since he wants to do it, as having been in the majority, and then, I would guess, anybody could second it. This is a matter of form.
I apologize, the city attorney's not here to advise us on this this evening.
Can I ask you to rescind the motion, and, and reverse the motion and second it?
Because you voted in the minority, you can't bring the motion.
Okay. I move to rescind my motion.
You can't rescind, because it wasn't a motion, if she couldn't make it.
I, I guess technically, it probably wasn't.
It wasn't a motion.
Okay, well, we'll just scratch that completely, I think.
Then we start over.
This, this is, this is new Roberts Rules of Order ground, we've never gone over this, we're making it up as we go here, so, all right.
Well, two.
Well, whoever voted.
So the second has to be a yes, or the second has to be a no?
I don't think the second has to be a yes.
From the last time?
From the last time, but.
Right.
I think, I, I think that.
It's one of the people who voted for.
We're not sure, because the, the attorney isn't here, why don't we wait till the next time? Put it back on?
Why don't you move, Ken, and I'll second it.
Okay.
Were you in the affirmative last time?
Yes.
I move to reconsider ordinance number 12 dash 05, which is.
For possible amendment, or?
Or possible repeal amendment at a future date, which would be February 28.
You want action on February 28, or you want it on for information?
Want it on for reconsideration as far as.
Meaning, this is the information right here. This is the notification that it's coming in two weeks.
So it'd be an action item on the 28th, as far as whether it's going to be repealed, whether it's going to be recreated?
I'll second.
The motion is second, Barbie, you were the one that seconded?
Mm-hmm.
The motion, have you got the, the motion down, Jan?
Yes.
You think, okay. The motion is second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under information and discussion items tonight, item A is a resolution to decrease registration fees for a specific recreation program, that's Backyard Buddies. Jordan Burris is here tonight, could you fill us in on that briefly, please, Jordan?
Sure. In June of 2011, the June 14 city council meeting, it was approved by the council to increase the registration fee from $40, or from $25 up to $40, and for residents, and then for non-residents, up to 80. This is a four-day program for three hours a day for four-to-six-year-olds, and in the recreation field, charging $40 and $80 for a four-day program for preschool kids, it's just not feasible. You can't ask parents to pay that, and I would recommend decreasing those fees, and only increasing them slightly for this summer.
Do you know what the enrollment, did the enrollment go down? I realized you weren't here last summer, but.
Well, it was approved to increase the fees for this summer.
Oh. So you're not.
So we haven't.
You don't know yet.
We haven't charged that much yet.
But the impact's going to be.
Correct.
Has this been reviewed by your Parks Committee?
And that resolution was approved by the city council without going to the rect department committee or commission. Since it didn't go to the commission, we couldn't go back to the commission and have them undo something the council did. So we're asking you to reconsider a previous decision that was made last year at this time in order to ensure that the program continues to operate for this summer. In the future, everything will go to the committee before it comes to the city council. We are in the process of drafting a resolution looking at fees for 2013.
Other questions?
I just note that the revenue will decrease, so will that be made up somewhere else or there is no fiscal note as to where?
We will be adding various other programs that will hopefully make up for that $680 loss. Or it's not even a loss, it's just, it's nonexistent really. But charging 40 and 80, we wouldn't have the program at all, so we would lose all of that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Item B under information is resolution to amend section 6, paren E and G, paren 3, C of the employee handbook, specifically work assignments and call-ins. Larry, would you run us through this briefly?
Certainly. This is a resolution as a result of several staff meetings. Basically, what has happened is there's some confusion among staff regarding what constitutes a call-in as defined by our employee handbook and what constitutes a change in work schedules. We run into situations where where an employee, it starts to snow on Saturday, the employee has to come in on Sunday. We say we're going to change the schedule and send you home early on next Friday. What this resolution does is it changes the language a little bit to help make it clear the separation between a change in work schedule and a change in call-in time by establishing a 12-hour period. So if the supervisor provides 12 hours of notice to the employee, then it's considered a change of schedule. If that's the intent is to change the schedule. In emergency situations where we don't, we can't anticipate a snowstorm or a water main break, in those cases where 12 hours notice is not provided, it's considered a call-in. And call-in is automatically time and a half or minimum of two hours pay. Whereas a change in schedule often results in the 37-hour work week reduced. So I think the clarification was something that the employees in the staff meetings all kind of agreed was needed. We talked about a 36, a 24 and ultimately the employees decided that a 12-hour was appropriate. So we're asking you to consider making amendment to the handbook to further clarify the difference between call-in and a change of work schedule.
And this would apply to all employees?
Yes.
Covered by the handbook?
Yes.
Which is?
All employees, specifically hourly, not salaried employees, the hourly or non-exempt employees.
So would this apply to the police?
It does not because, well, it would apply to the secretary positions or the administrative assistant positions. However, the officers are still governed by their WPPA union agreement. In which case, the union contract supersedes the employee handbook.
Any other questions?
I have one question. It's underneath example A on page two. And my question is, why isn't the number of hours 37 instead of 40?
Because the hours between 37 and 40 are still regarded at straight time. Under federal law, you don't get time and a half unless you work more than 40 hours per week. I'm sorry, am I looking at the right example?
Example A, yeah.
Example A, well, what I'm getting at is the city of Platteville, it's got 37 hours as a week.
Right.
So why isn't that the regular week? And overtime beyond 37?
I'm following the federal law, if you wish to offer a benefit beyond what's required, that has not been discussed to my knowledge. So the answer to your question is, I don't know that the city council has discussed offering time and a half for hours 37, 38, 39 and 40. And so the draft I was putting together followed the federal laws. I didn't offer a benefit that you hadn't discussed.
But in other words, is possible.
Oh, sure, you can do whatever, I mean, if you want to offer additional benefits as a city council, you can do that.
Well, I thought since we cut back the hours, that if you're working up to 40, then three hours is overtime.
That is not my impression of what occurred so far, but if you are interested in discussing that, we could put it on an agenda in the future and make that a possible change as well.
Any other questions? Item C, under information and discussion, is the conditional use permit for 1100 East Mineral Street. This is the Iverson Construction Asphalt Plant. This is their annual request to do the asphalt plant. This has been going on for a long time, it's their annual conditional use permit for doing that. Item D is committee consolidation, these are just holdovers from previous times and will come forward for action next time. Any questions or comments on any of that?
I have a question of Barb, is it not? Is there any meeting going to be held on this? At one time we talked about it.
At one time, we talked about holding a joint tourism museum and arts board meeting. But as you see the ordinance, the arts and the museum have been left off of this. I personally believe that we should not put this on for action next time. There's currently a bill under consideration in the legislature and until we find out what the implications of that bill are relative to this particular ordinance and any changes, I believe we're ill-advised to take any action.
Does the bill deal with tourism entity or?
It deals with tourism, tourism entity and road tax.
I disagree with that. It should be put on for action, I've already got an email out to Tranis Travel to interpret your concerns and they're going to get back to me hopefully by tomorrow and I can forward that email on to you. And it should be resolved.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, at this point, we'll move into work session mode, the cameras go off, we continue to meet work session, talk some things through, see if we can generate some consensus on some things, so at this point, the normal part of the meeting is over and take a five-minute break and then come back and talk about some other things, specifically fire EMS conference of plan and industrial park developments.